Can everybody hear me okay on the mic? Okay, great. I guess we're gonna get started then. Everybody's all situated. So, welcome everyone. I am Tiffany Perry Marks and my co-moderator for this evening is Amy Levick. And we are-
Can anybody hear me okay? On the mic?
Oh, gosh.
Oh.
We're gonna get started then.
Give it a second, I know.
Setting is general display if my memory is correct.
Date and time keyboard.
Make it not go to sleep.
Right, display and brightness, I tried that.
So sorry about that. We should be good now.
Okay. Let's see. And so can everybody hear me okay now again? Just wanna make sure I'm coming across alright, great. As I was saying, we are members of the Governing Council for the Progressive Women's Caucus, or PWC. And the PWC works to elevate women and shape our community through leadership and participation. We are all on, we are on an all-volunteer board where we work to provide voter education in the community. And we are definitely grateful for you joining us tonight and for the candidates who are dedicating their time being here as well. So this event is being livestreamed on YouTube as we are very aware now. And will be archived on the PWC YouTube page for viewing at a later date. Melanie Montoya Wasserman, also a PWC Governing Council member, is going to be our timekeeper for the evening. And she will notify candidates when their time has elapsed. So we want to extend a huge thank you to Tri-County Health Network for partnering with us to provide simultaneous interpretation and babysitting for the evening. We are incredibly grateful to have Antonio Rodriguez here, who is providing that interpretation. And we have headphones available in the back of the room for anyone who would like to listen in Spanish as well as English. And so Antonio, if you'd like to introduce yourself really quickly?
Yeah, you have to go over to the mic. Hi, everybody. My name is Antonio and I'm gonna be providing some better interpretation for whoever needs it. I don't see anyone there yet, but it's so important to take into consideration the other big chunk of the population, which their primary language is Spanish. So, thank you to Tri-County for having me here today. And I just would like to acknowledge the big effort to be inclusive in public spaces in all the aspects of their regular life, all the citizens and the town. Thank you and I'll be doing that.
Okay, good evening. I'm Amy Levick and we want to start the evening by briefly explaining the context of this June 25th primary election and later the November 5th general election. San Miguel County is broken up into three districts, District 1 and District 3 Commissioner seats for election in 2024. And all Board of County Commissioner seats are at-large seats, meaning that all San Miguel County residents can vote for each seat regardless of where you live. Our event tonight focuses on the District 1 seat. We have two Democratic candidates running, Ann Brown and Geneva Shawnet. The District 1 seat will be determined at the primary election on June 25th. That's coming up because no Republican or independent candidate is running for the District 1 seat. So the winner of the primary will still need to be voted into their seat in the November election. Little confusing. District 3 has two candidates running, Candy Mian as an independent and Galena Gleason as a Democrat. Their race will be determined in November as each candidate is from a different party. So to start the forum, each candidate will have one minute to introduce themselves and we will start with Ann Brown and alternate from there throughout the evening.
Okay, here we go. Hi, I'm Ann Brown. I've lived in the county for 35 years in all three Commissioner districts, including 10 years in the town of Telluride. I raised my family here while working full-time in the market research industry and have been serving the community in various capacities since I first arrived, including now as the incumbent District 1 Commissioner. I would like to thank the PWC for bringing important issues to the attention of our community for providing a platform for civil discourse. And I especially want to echo what Antonio said. Appreciate you having included our Spanish-speaking community in this forum by providing trans- interpretation. On Sunday, I went to Nucla to represent the county by attending Senator Bennett's listening session on the proposed Dolores River Monument. There were over 500 people there with strong opposing views. It was perfectly respectful and extremely informative, and I look forward to a similar civil discourse and sharing of information here today.
Thank you, Ann. Geneva?
Thank you so much. Hello, everybody. My name's Geneva Shawnet. I am 37 years old. I'm a twice-elected Telluride Town Council member and I've lived and worked full-time in the region for the last 15 years. I'm running for office at the county level because I see a lot of county residents that need support and representation. People are not in stable housing, they need childcare, access to mental health support, and on top of it, on top of it all, the class divide is widening. We're seeing some examples of special interests fighting and delaying meaningful community housing projects, and I want to see action and improve efficiency in the work of our local government. I believe in robust debate, public input, and constituent criticism of government actions. I think that diverse opinions and public discourse are part of a healthy democracy, and I think it creates meaningful dialogue and a more collaborative outcome overall. I hope that my record on council in this department speaks for itself. I believe that our government can and should support opening up a pathway to stability and support for our community members through government projects and policies. If you agree and want to see measurable progress and action on these issues, I hope you will vote for me. Thanks.
Thank you, Geneva.
Okay, so for the forum questions, each question will be displayed on the screen and you both will have two and a half minutes to answer each question. We ask that you speak clearly and at a moderate pace to make Antonio's life a little easier tonight when he does have to interpret for us. If you need the question repeated, please ask us and we're happy to do that. Amy and I, as moderators, may use our discretion to follow up on a question or ask for clarifications. If we do that, each candidate will have 30 seconds to clarify themselves further. So we'll get started and this question will go to Geneva first now since we're gonna alternate. So knowing that county commissioners or county commissions have a lot of discretion in how they spend their time, how do you see yourself prioritizing local, state, and federal issues? Are there specific topics that you are already engaging in?
Thank you for the question. I love this question. So I have had some experience deciding how to spend my time on town council and what I have spent a lot of my time doing is trying to connect with the community, community members. That means being around on Main Street, attending social events, reaching out on social media, and really hearing from people what is important to them. I love advocacy and I love lobbying and I think I would really enjoy spending time at the state level communicating with our state lawmakers as well as federal about issues that affect our region specifically. We're in a unique situation out here in a rural, in a rural environment, but also with some very, you know, high tourism resort, high-income constituents and visitors. And I think that that puts us in a unique place where not all kind of rural programs would work for us and not all urban programs would work for us from state, state grant opportunities and things like that. So for me, if I had to say today how I would spend my time, I think it would probably be 50/50 between connecting with community members here in the region. Of course, I'm very familiar with District 1 and the town of Telluride, but also spending time in other parts of the county, as well as being in strong contact with our state representatives and our federal representatives on ways that we can get our hands on some money, grant money for our big infrastructure projects that we have coming up in the region. And yeah, I'll leave it at that.
Are we looking, is it my turn? I was gonna say-
Do we need to provide any extra time for Antonio? Any questions or just keep going?
Okay, alright, good. Then yes, you want to keep, do you want me to repeat the question for you?
Okay, good. Thank you very much. Yes, it's true that commissioners do have a lot of discretion in how they spend their time and it's actually one of the pleasures of the job because you can really lean into the areas that you think are important. And we do work together collaboratively, the three commissioners, to make sure we're kind of covering as many bases as possible based on our experiences and our interests and expertise and so forth. So I spent the first year working primarily on local issues. I mean, that is absolutely the priority of the county commissioner. I had four priorities when I entered office and I've now expanded it to five. I think I had a pretty good sense of what the commissioner or the county needed at the time because I had already been working for the county for about three and a half years and in the Public Health Department and in fact had put together a health assessment for the commissioners that pulled together about four different studies to understand kind of the areas that we needed to focus on. And so I brought those with me when I joined the commission about four years ago. Those included workforce housing, behavioral health, which is the umbrella term for mental health and substance misuse, the East End Master Plan, and then immigrant advocacy. So those were the four that I kind of leaned into when I first arrived and have continued to do so. The fifth one that came up during my tenure, my one year, is the solar regulations, which are extremely important, both in terms of our being able to fulfill our climate action plan and in terms of addressing climate change globally, nationally, regionally, and then of course also in terms of protecting our precious lands here. So there's some conflicting important things there that, that made that a priority for me. And that's been something that the B OCC, Board of County Commissioners and Planning Commission have worked on jointly together, which is pretty unusual at this stage, but it's gone very well and we're getting pretty close. In terms of state issues, my predecessor Hillary Cooper was very effective at the state level and very well-known, big shoes to fill. I wasn't quite ready to do it, but I did my best. I do represent the county on CCAT and CCI, which are the two advocacy commit, groups for commissioners, counties. And I hope as I get more up to speed locally, I can spend more time there. Thank you.
Okay, Ann, the next one starts out with you. And this is an idea, how will you balance representing people who live in unincorporated San Miguel County and the people who live in the incorporated municipalities throughout the county?
Sure. That's kind of a tricky one. As, as I think it was you, Amy, who mentioned, each of the commissioners lives in a, in one of the geographic areas, but we are elected by the county at large and we represent the county at large. Our primary kind of thing we're able to do is to manage what happens in the unincorporated areas of the, of the community. So our big towns, town of Telluride, the town of Mountain Village, our home rural municipalities. I love this about Colorado, we're very much about local control and those home rural municipalities are very powerful, as I think they should be. And so the town of, the San Miguel County has very little to do with what happens inside those boundaries. They have their own government of seven people, they have a budget that's almost three times the size of the county's budget. And so we don't have any really say in what goes on there. At the same time, I, I do reside in District 1. I lived in the town of Telluride and now I live in a, in another part of the district and know it very well and spend obviously a ton of time here. And so I'm very connected to all generations within this community and feel that I have a good sense of their, of their interests and priorities and am able to kind of continually feed that, feed that flow of information through my relationships. Yeah, it's not like the House of Representatives where District 1 kind of lobbies for the bridge money for their district. That's not how it works at the county level. We represent the county at large. And so I will represent District 1 as I represent all of the districts, but perhaps with an even closer understanding of this one because I do live there. Did I get the whole thing?
I've got a follow-up question. If there's something happening in one of those jurisdictions that conflicts with, with action that the county's taking or vice versa, how would you work on that?
Um, boy, I guess I haven't experienced a conflict there yet. And I don't think we have really any jurisdiction within the town if there is a conflict. So I, I don't have a good example to lean into there, Amy, but I'm a very collaborative worker and I'm actually very excited about the collaboration that's occurring now among the three primary jurisdictions here. So I think that we would sit down together and talk about our different perspectives, if we have them, our different roles, and how we can figure out a way forward that works for all of us.
Okay, thank you. Geneva, do you want me to repeat the question?
No, that's okay. I can read it up there. Balancing representing people who live in unincorporated versus incorporated municipalities. I think that every San Miguel resident, San Miguel County resident deserves representation at the county level, whether they live in a municipality or they don't. Our districts are separated by population. There are meant to be three roughly equal population districts and candidates or county commissioners must reside, you know, must reside in each to qualify for their seat. But I think that the point of having districts to begin with is to have different backgrounds and different influences at the county level. I certainly agree with Ann that there's people who live in unincorporated county that may have a distinct, specific issue for their area that has to do with road maintenance or plowing or other county zoning issues that aren't covered by Mountain Village Building Code or Town of Telluride Zoning Code. But I don't think that that means that people who live within municipalities don't deserve someone who understands their needs overall at the county level. We are right now in the midst of collaborating, and I say we, I mean the town of Telluride, the town of Mountain Village, San Miguel County, the town of Norwood, many, many HOAs. Everybody's collaborating together on some big projects, including the wastewater treatment plant and the Gondola and SMART, which is sort of the overseeing organization that is going to guide the Gondola funding and management over the next period of time. And I think it's really important for people who are sitting at the county level to have a really good connection and understanding and communication, consistent communication with all of those different municipalities. I think that they need to understand especially more the district that they come from, what the challenges, what the needs, what the desires are from their constituents. Yeah, is there any follow-up questions there?
Oh, sorry. I was reading instructions. Do we get a response to that?
Geneva gets an extra 30 seconds because you've got an extra 30 seconds with Amy's follow-up question.
Okay, so we know response, okay. That's okay.
So yeah, I think, I think that while it is an interesting situation that the town of Telluride takes up the vast majority, I think like 95-ish percent of the population of District 1, I think that all of the people that live in Telluride and that live in District 1 deserve to have that representation, that understanding from their representative at the county level, equal to, if not a little bit more than people who live in the rest of the county are owed, you know, understanding and representation by each of the county commissioners. We have a lot of big budget items coming up and collaboration is really key and being on the same page and understanding what everybody's desires are is really important.
Thank you.
Okay, so this will go back to Geneva again. Now with an annual budget of about $36 million, prioritizing the county's discretionary spending is crucial. So what are your top priorities for budget allocations and how do you plan to ensure that these areas receive the necessary funding without neglecting other essential services?
So budgeting is one of the most important things that we do as elected officials, whether it's a town budget or county budget. I think for me, representing support for people-centric needs is the top priority for me. So that means funding public health issues, which I also consider to be affordable housing, childcare, things that make people's lives easier and make them feel stable and secure in their future. And so I think the county is already doing some reallocation of some funds right now to affordable housing, which I love to see. In the past, the county has been able to participate in some collaborative affordable housing projects because they have land that they've acquired over the years, either through trades or purchases or deals. And so having a budget line item to lend towards housing is gonna be huge. I also think that we need, you know, hand-in-hand with, with affordable housing is daycare. And I think everybody, most people who are tuned in to children know that we are way behind on childcare centers. And so funding either local organizations and nonprofits that are working to support these issues, I think is a really good way for the county to get involved and budget. And as opposed to starting new programs, there's a lot of great work going on now that needs extra funding. And let's see, the rest of the question. I think that essential services, there's things that we sort of take for granted that are sort of the unsexy parts of government, like plowing the roads and making sure the toilets flush. We can't defund those things. It's really important as the government to ensure that transportation, you know, emergency response, infrastructure like wastewater and water are kind of the number one, cannot neglect items that are in our budget, that are really important for us to maintain. So if there's extra discretionary budget spending, I look forward to reallocating that, but certainly not at the expense of defunding other really important programs.
Thank you. Ann, if you're ready?
I'm ready. I agree with your opening statement that probably the most important part of a job of a county commissioner is managing the budget. And in our case, the budget is quite limited. I would say I have a good background, as good a background as anybody, to understand and manage the budget at the county. I have a degree in economics from Yale University where I graduated cum laude. I've served on a number of boards in the area, including as treasurer on two. So I have a good sense of how to look at historical, current, and long-term budgets. In fact, we revamped the whole budget sort of approach for a board that I served on. Just want to provide a little perspective on how relatively little money the county has to work with compared to, for example, the town of Telluride. In 2024, the county budget is just over $36 million and that includes a lot of grant money, a lot of pass-throughs from the state and federal government, and a lot of mill levies that are already directed to essential services. So I haven't crunched the numbers, but we have very little discretionary funding. And that $36 million divided by 8,000, so residents we have is $4,500 per resident. For the town of Telluride budget, I have to say I'm relying on my kitchen cabinet, so if I got that wrong, I've got someone to blame besides myself. But my understanding is that the 24 budget is $95 million and the quick math suggests that's $35,000 per resident versus 4,500, again with very little of our money being discretionary. So we have to treat that very carefully. We take a very frugal approach. That starts with the county manager, who is one of the, I don't want to say chief, he's frugal. He is a really good, very good steward of our money, as do the three commissioners. None of us are wealthy people, so we take that very care, very, very seriously. In terms of the discretionary money, we have a very well-established set of priorities that the commissioners developed as soon after I took office. Our top three priorities are housing, behavioral health, and climate resiliency. Sadly, the housing line item that Geneva referred to, where we're trying to reallocate some funding from an existing mill levy, not raise taxes, will provide less than a million dollars a year, maybe 600. But we're doing what we can with, with what we have. Yeah, and I don't think there's really much risk of, okay. Thank you.
Okay, Ann, we'll, we'll start with you on this one. Do you think that we can solve our county-wide housing deficit through ADUs, through adding ADUs, minor-scale projects and infill development? Or do we also need larger developments, like planned unit developments?
I guess that's yes. We can solve it through ADUs, minor-scale projects, infill developments, and we need new planned developments. We also need transportation. I think that's another big part. Not everybody who works here wants to live in Telluride and so, or even in the county. And so I think we, we need to address it, kind of all hands, all approaches on deck. And I just want to say, some of you don't know me very well, but that workforce housing has been my number one priority since I first became county commissioner or first volunteered. The issue is very personal to me. Like everybody, many people here, I lived through the housing struggle myself. I moved over nine times in my years in the county, 12 if you count the times that we were caretakers and we had to move out for Christmas and spring break, my own, when the, the owners came to stay in their home. And of course, those are the hardest times to find housing. My children, who were born and raised in Telluride, haven't figured out a way to live here yet. So this issue is very personal. When I was pregnant with our first child, Toby and I bought our first home, that's my husband back there, at Fairway Ford. It was the first deed-restricted ownership property in the county, so it was pretty risky and a little bit scary and it was a big stretch for us. When we brought Sandy home, my first son, our first son, to that house, we had $1,500 in the bank. Obviously, we are more well-established now. We've been here a long time and we have both worked hard to build the life that we have here. But when I was a young person, I lived the housing struggle myself and so I get it. I know it's worse. I know it's worse. Everything is worse. But it's not like I don't understand it and that my own children aren't living through it. How much time do I have? I forgot to start my clock.
Forty seconds.
Forty seconds. And housing, we are taking an all-hands-on-deck approach at the county. We are, for the first time, developing four projects of our own, I should say three and a half. We have developed the Community Housing Zone District to try to, needs work, we're reworking it to try to expedite hopefully now smaller projects, although it was applied very successfully to the Alexander Project in Illiam Valley. We're exploring a ballot measure to reallocate some existing mill levies. We're supporting the Telluride Foundation as they significantly revamp the Housing Opportunity Fund. That's in early stages, but we will provide seed money, I hope, and also a backstop. And we are looking at reviewing ADU regulations.
Thank you, Geneva.
Thank you. So I believe that we need a multi-pronged approach and I call it the three Ps. I got to talk about this at the forum last weekend. I think the first thing we need to do is private property zoning amendments that incentivize and allow people to do, choose their own way to add to the affordable housing stock in our community. That means ADUs and minor-scale projects. There has been some work on that through the Community Housing Zone District, as Ann mentioned. I know that's getting reworked and I hope that it stays broad enough to remove the red tape and the difficulty for private property owners to be able to do that kind of action for those who want to do something on their own property. The second P is public projects. I have a lot of experience with that, with my work on town council, and that means larger scale projects that are able to leverage larger bonding and create deed-restricted projects on public land. That could mean projects that the town of Telluride has done, like Voodoo, where we design and build the whole thing ourselves, or public-private partnership where we work with an outside developer, give them a very cheap land lease and they create housing within parameters that we request. And the third thing is policy. And I know a lot of folks have been paying attention to the town of Telluride housing deed restriction and rental housing policies and guidelines that we have. What we're discovering is that the original rules that we had for a lot of our projects don't apply to our residents anymore because things have changed, the economy has changed, online work has changed, people's incomes have changed. And what we're trying to do now is figure out a way to manage those rules- And what we're trying to do now is figure out a way to manage those rules to fit, better fit our community members while still providing housing for our lower income members of the community who still need the more affordable housing, the lower income appropriate housing. And yeah, those are my three Ps: private property, public property and policy. I think that the policy also extends to San Miguel County deed restrictions. And there's been some movement and some interest in potentially adjusting some of those to better fit our community members who've been living in housing for a long time. And it's all going to be a balance of figuring out how to protect folks from losing their housing, their deed restricted housing that have been in their housing for a long time, but also maintaining that lower entry level ability for our new community members.
Thank you.
Okay, and so we'll pass this back to Geneva again to start with. So given that the loudest opponents often dominate discussions, how would you approach decision-making to ensure all voices and interests are heard?
Great question. I've been a part of some very controversial projects in the last seven years. And I think the loud opponents definitely know how to utilize our government communication systems through email, through coming to town council meetings and speaking publicly, from flagging us down on the street to let us know their feelings. And I think that's a really, that's a, that is a huge part of democracy and I think a really important part. I am trying to find, and I have been trying to find, other ways to reach out to folks. I've done a lot of outreach on CODO through my GS for Government segment, trying to just get out the word about things that are coming up. Also, more recently, been part of Latino Advocacy Commission meetings and CAFI meetings and trying to figure out ways where the town of Telluride can adjust our communication strategy to be more accessible to more parts of our community. When it comes to decision-making, I think, at least for me, I'm very bold and outspoken about what I believe and what I think should happen and what my mission will be getting elected. And so I feel a certain sense of confidence that if I am elected, that the people believe in my decision-making. That doesn't mean I don't want to keep listening to everybody and keep learning about every situation. But I think that it's important to remember that folks who don't hold a certain privilege to be able to understand how to navigate the communication systems of government aren't always, are rarely going to be able to participate in measurable ways that it seems like some of our loud, really involved, passionate community members do. So I try and use an adjustment of, in my experience and my communication and the outreach that I do to really try and scoop into the feedback, people who don't have time to come to county meetings or town meetings, people that are working, people that are watching their kids, and who maybe don't even know what's going on because they haven't had time to really get to know the issues and, and understand the nuances of some of these really big discussions and really controversial discussions. So to sum it up, I think I would say I, I approach decision-making by trying to reach out to as many people as possible in as many ways and meet them where they are. I don't need to reach out to folks who are tuned in already. I need to reach out to folks who aren't.
Thank you. Anne?
Thank you. It is true that the loudest opponents often dominate discussions and that those are often people of privilege, who have the wherewithal to access information and have flexible schedules and, and so forth. And so I agree with Geneva. I think it's important that as a commissioner, we go out into the community to engage with those who don't have that same privilege. The other thing, and I, and I do that by serving on, together the commissioners serve on about 40 boards, which we kind of distribute amongst ourselves based on our interests and expertise. I mentioned something like that earlier. And that's a great way of staying in touch with different constituencies. That I also feel that we just need to be out and about. And that is something that I've had more time or dedicated more time to during this campaign. The first year was a lot of in the office, getting up to speed, going to meetings. But during the campaign, I held probably 12 meet and greets, often with people that I didn't know. And it was really enlightening and interesting to hear from those folks. I didn't, hadn't thought that when the county didn't open one of the passes until later in the summer, how much it would impact that Jeep business owner. And that's the kind of thing I think I will continue to do in this term is to hold more meet and greets. Engagement with constituents is actually one of the county's priorities for the coming year. And we are doing that through a lot more outreach in terms of just sharing information so people understand what's happening in multiple channels. And then also, as I said, going out into the community. We've had coffee with the, with the commissioner, which I had hoped would be cocktails with the commissioner, but it got overruled. And we have a new PIO, who I think is doing a terrific job. And then just, you know, calling on people when I need to hear from them, sitting in their living rooms, walking through their fields, inviting them into my home, that's how I do it.
Thank you. There was my question.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
You're good.
Sorry, okay, Anne, here we go. What elements of the Climate Action Plan and the, and the Climate Change and Resiliency and the East End Master Plan are your highest priorities for implementation?
Okay, let me find my notes on that. It's funny, I was on the phone today with Joan May, who a lot of you may know. She is a former county commissioner and works for CC4CA, which is a climate advocacy group at the state level. And we were talking about my priorities versus her priorities and how she, how strongly she feels about the work I'm doing, and yet there are a few things that she feels I'm slacking on. And one of those is climate and the environment. And when I spoke to Joan, right when I started my, my term, I told her that the commissioners and I had talked and that Lance Waring, again, we divvy up responsibilities, had agreed, had agreed to take the lead on that for the commission. He's already has deep roots in that. And I had a lot of other priorities and things that I needed to get up to speed with. So I will not pretend that I am deeply aware of the details of the Climate Action Plan. I will tell you that I'm thrilled that the county, along with all the other regional municipalities, have adopted it. And I will tell you that the county is working very hard to do our part. And that includes working on EV readiness plan. It includes on getting funding currently now for EV chargers, looking at which parts of our fleet we can turn to electric. 70% of our power is generated by our own solar facilities. We have about six or seven of those, including two micro grids. And we have a very robust and exciting PES program, which pays farmers and ranchers to, for carbon request, sequestration projects. We have a natural resources director who spends more time than she's paid to, to weigh in on US Forest Service and BLM plans and provide the county perspective on that. We have always been a leader in climate action in the state, and we continue to be so. I will say, we rely heavily on eco-action partners. They're kind of our sustainability department for leading this, for leading this effort. Lance Waring, my colleague, is on that board and is the chair. We help fund eco-action partners. And I know that we are doing as much as any county, if not more, to address climate change, which I view as an existential threat. But again, not my particular area of expertise at this time.
Thank you. Geneva?
Okay, the Climate Action Plan. If housing wasn't such an issue for me and for my community and my generation, climate would be number one. And it still is hugely important. I think the most important thing that the county can do is integrate climate action policies and lenses on all of the programs that we do. And that goes from zoning to new projects, the way we develop our transportation system and everything in between. When we've, we've done a lot of work on town of Telluride's Climate Action Plan, and we measure all these different categories of greenhouse gas emissions. And I always have been really excited about compost, but my heart kind of sank when I saw how low compost and waste diversion is in greenhouse gas emissions when compared to, say, buildings and transportation. But buildings and building energy use for cooling, heating, using your stove, everything like that is so far ahead of all of the other contributors to greenhouse gas emissions that I think that tidying up our building code and requiring more higher green policies, LEED certifications, that sort of thing, like we've done at Sunnyside, which is a totally net zero affordable housing project, that should be the goal standard for the region. When it comes to the West End, I went to the West End last weekend and talked a lot with the Norwood mayor about water issues, both water conservation, but also just their infrastructure for the water system there and how that relates to being able to put out fires. And we have a really large risk of wildfires in our region, but especially in the West End. So I would love to see how, I'm also new to, of course, West End climate issues, but I think figuring out a way that our county can support Norwood's ability to, in climate resiliency, as it pertains to water conservation, getting enough water for their agricultural industries out there, but also improving their ability to fight fires through their water system. Because right now, they basically have been told that they don't have the correct amount of pressure regulation. And if they were to put on a fire hose and put out a fire, it would kind of explode their water system, which is not good. So I think in, summing it up, West End climate resiliency, East End, I think we need building code improvements.
Okay. And so back again to Geneva. So what are your values around environmental issues and natural resources? Now, what are you passionate about in this area? And what are you willing to do to promote environmental stewardship?
So this is a little bit related to our last question, but I think we're all here. It's hard work to live in this county, no matter what part of the county you live in. And I think we're all here on purpose, and we're all here because we love this landscape, the mountains, the mesas, the canyons, everything in between. I think that natural, our number one natural resource is water. Telluride is uniquely positioned to be at the headwaters of, you know, the entire region, really, and have taken that job very seriously. But we can always see more improvements in the way that we manage our water, control, you know, not wasting processed water, making sure we take care of the river. I think water's the number one. And, you know, we hear about it on a national level, that the water wars are coming and people are already in a million lawsuits about water rights for the Colorado River and more. So I mean, I think water is probably my number one passion. I learned a lot last weekend about wildfire mitigation. I went up to the Mountain Village program that was put on by Town of Mountain Village, the Forest Service, the Fire Protection District and San Miguel County's Own Emergency Preparedness District. And there was a lot more we can do as individual property owners, landowners, and individual responsibility that needs to be taken in our region for wildfire mitigation in terms of protecting structures. And there's a lot of information more about that on the county's website. But I think that we need to be working together with the latest science on wildfire mitigation, protecting structures by clearing away brush and smaller trees at different intervals. Some of that stuff's kind of nerdy. I don't know if this is the time to get into the specifics. But I think really just the county's role needs to be to ensure that everybody understands what our personal responsibility is, both with water conservation and wildfire mitigation, those top two things. And really recognize that we're really way out here and we need to take care of the landscape, take care of the environment, of course, take care of trails, LNT. I mean, I used to, I was a Knowles student and learned a lot about that. But I think that that, that needs to apply on a, on a macro level when we're talking about government programs as well.
Thank you, Geneva. Anne?
Yeah, a little bit of an overlap, but I think what I'm passionate about in terms of the environment is seeing the Climate Action Plan instituted. And I think that the county is very committed to that. There's been a lot of thought that's gone into that in terms of goal-setting and ways to get there. But that is kind of the next step. In terms of subject matter, I'm very passionate about consuming less. It's hard to say in this, in this society, isn't it? But I think that whole reduce, reuse, repurpose, recycle is really important and that we just cannot keep buying more and more and expecting to throw it out. And so that's a principle I try to put in my life and in the county government. Water is definitely a big deal. I don't know much about water yet. Fortunately, Candy Mead knows a lot about water. Chris, Chris Holstrom knows a lot about water. And they have really been leading that charge very effectively. But as Chris terms out, we will see who takes that one up. Thing I'm probably most passionate about, though, is renewable energy production. And while we do have pretty stringent solar regs coming online, I think they are going to allow us to develop some small, medium and large-scale solar in the right places. I think that's, that's really the, the thing that we need to focus on. And actually, I really like composting. I don't know actually what it does for greenhouse gases, but I know that 40% of our food goes to waste and we try really hard in our house not to do that. And the county is working on a countywide compost, composting program. So kind of, yeah, that's it.
Thank you.
Okay, Anne. How do you envision the future development of the Diamond Ridge property? And what specific plans or projects would you advocate for to achieve this vision? And please focus on the future, forward-looking ideas rather than past issues or controversies.
Sorry, the vision of Diamond Ridge? What specific plans or projects would I advocate to achieve the vision of Diamond Ridge?
Yeah.
Okay. At this point, I do not have a position on Diamond Ridge. I am not against it. I'm not against it. I did speak out as a private, I was a private citizen on May 22nd, when the Board of County Commissioners made the rezoning position. And at that time, I just urged the Board of County Commissioners to wait until they had more information, or at least they could share that information with the public so that we could get on board with the spending of $7.21 million. And yes, $5 million of that was DOLA money, but let's not forget that DOLA money comes from taxpayers as well, including from communities far less wealthy than ours. So I did not say no to Diamond Ridge and then, and I will not say no to Diamond Ridge today. What I will say yes to is an open public process that decides the future of Diamond Ridge. We, I don't have the information yet. We were going to have a meeting together with the new commissioner, me, and the new council members to go over what I thought was the information that the council and the commission had when they made that decision. I trust that they made it with the best of intentions, but the community wasn't in on that decision, and so we don't know. My understanding was that we were going to have a public meeting to review those studies. And when I found out that we weren't, I, I protested. I was trying, they tried to convince me, certain people, that we should have this meeting because there were legal matters to discuss. At that time, there were no pending legal, no lawsuits. There were politics to discuss. I didn't feel that this was a political decision. I felt like this was going to be a rational decision that we made with good information. I was also told that newer elected officials might feel uncomfortable asking questions and speaking in public. And so the meeting was scheduled to be a 100% executive session. I didn't feel like that was the right way to revisit the Diamond Ridge situation, which was, was, which was seen as a secret process. I don't know that it was really secret. I think a lot of it happened during the pandemic, when people were just not able to engage. I think it was done with the best of intentions. In terms of moving it forward, my vision would be that we have an open public process, that we put all of our cards on the table and talk about all the information that we had and that may have been updated since that decision was made, that we do a, have a housing strategic kind of meeting among the jurisdictions to understand what our priorities should be in terms of projects. And then we decide together whether we want to move forward or not.
Thank you. Geneva?
Okay, so I believe in land banking, and I think that that's something- And I think that that's something that's been on the goals and objectives for the Town of Telluride for a long time, as well as for the county as a way to promote future potential housing projects. This property is close to town and on a road that can easily get a, a bus line. It's also sunny and beautiful and I think would be a great site for a potential housing project. I think in the, the past, the history of this project has been obviously fraught and very controversial. And I think that the reasoning for that is that the Community Housing Zone District was very broad and would have allowed a much shorter pathway to get to a development plan. And I think that a lot of community members were uncomfortable with that for such a potentially large project. And I totally understand that. I think that having an affordable housing PUD process to figure out what will fit on the site, getting a ton of public input, having public meetings leading up to a development application is a really great way to move forward from here. And if through that process, the feedback is that the community at large does not want a project up there, then I think that the town and the county as joint owners will have to go back to the drawing board and see what other things can be done on that property. I do take issue with Anne's characterization with the canceled meeting and with the, you know, the assertion that not everybody had all the information because the rezoning applications that were utilized to rezone the Diamond Ridge property to the CH Zone District are available on the county website. They're really long, but they have all of the studies, soil studies, traffic studies, feedback from many people, along with diagrams of how many units could fit and that sort of thing. So I think it's up to elected officials to read those development applications and understand the history of how the project got to the point that it is. And I think that we do need to have a meeting to discuss legal ramifications. We just received word from a lawsuit that's been in progress today and I look forward to discussing that in executive session because that's how town governments and county governments discuss legal issues at first. But I do think that there's a bright future ahead for a super open discussion about this property and what can go on it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so for this section, we will now move on to where the candidates will have an opportunity to ask one another a question. And so candidates will have two minutes to respond to the question. And then the candidate who asked the question will get a 30-second rebuttal if they choose. And so with this, again, we're going to continue kind of in the back and forth. We'll start with Geneva asking Anne a question at this time.
Okay. This question kind of came up earlier today and in the forum last week, so I think we'll, I would love to revisit. You mentioned today that Telluride residents have their own government to go to with their issues and their management and aren't subject to county policies and programs, I guess. But with these big collaborative projects coming up, does that mean that you don't think that their input is important in the county's perspective of negotiating? And, and if that's a mischaracterization of what you meant, don't you think it's important to reach out to and collaborate with local municipalities, especially those of your own district, and to understand the needs of the residents of your district?
Okay, can you put that up on the PowerPoint? First of all, I live in District One, Geneva, okay? I lived in the Town of Telluride for 10 years and I currently reside in the Town of Telluride. And the idea that the representative from District One needs to live on Main Street is a little offensive to me. I think that all of the voices in District One need to be represented. I have 35 years of relationships with people in District One, as well as other districts, and I continue to develop those. As a county representative, when we are working on collaborative projects, I obviously feel that the county, and that, sorry, the town is very well represented by its council and the Mountain Village by its council. My job is to weigh all of the county's needs and all of the residents' needs. And, and so, yes, I absolutely think about my friends who live in District One and the people I don't know in District One, as well as District Two, as well as District Three. Did I fully answer the question?
I mean, I, I think that my question is really centered on why there hasn't been in your last year as a commissioner, more communication with the Town of Telluride directly and our government since we have an ability to distill the representation we're providing for our constituents? I'm not suggesting you have to live on Main Street, but I do find it surprising that you haven't done as much outreach to the local government here or to community members within the Town of Telluride as you have outside of District One.
Okay, do I respond?
Go for it.
Yeah. Okay. I, I, I don't know what you mean by I haven't done as much outreach to residents in District One. I'm in town almost every day and that's, this is where probably half of my friends live and eighty percent of the people that I, that I work with. So I am always in District One. In terms of working with the town council, I don't know if you expect me to come to town council meetings. I participate in all of the regional organizations that we, that we work on and, or, you know, that we work together on and listen closely to what's going on in all of those jurisdictions. So I guess I take objection to the fact that I'm not as engaged in District One as you think that I am not.
I think it would be an expectation to come to at least one of our council team, or council meetings to at least introduce yourself and trade numbers with members of town council. And that hasn't happened despite an invitation being extended. So that's where I see just a really big disconnect right now between the District One seat at the county and the largest municipality in the region, or excuse me, it's the same population-wise, but where most people work and where the economic center of our region is.
Can you remind me of the invitation that I declined?
The town manager invited you to come introduce yourself to our council at a council meeting and that never happened.
Okay, we're gonna shift over to the next question.
I would have enjoyed it. I love meeting with people and speaking in public.
So we'll, we'll switch over now for Anne to then ask your question to Geneva.
Geneva?
Yes, Anne.
I would like to invite you to lunch on June 27th. Are you available?
I have an event contract, but I'll see if I can skip out of me too.
That's two days after this primary and I would invite you for the day right after the vote count, but I have a Board of County Commissioners that day. And you know I have not missed one Board of County Commissioners meeting since I was appointed last spring because you visited the county offices to ask for my attendance record. I have not missed one meeting and I won't miss the one the day after the election. And anyway, no matter what the primary results, I'd like to have lunch with you so we can start to repair or perhaps rebuild or build this relationship. While I have focused my campaign on respectfully discussing my record and my priorities for moving forward, you've thrown zingers.
Anne, I'm gonna interrupt you, though, and, and ask what the question is that you have for Geneva beyond just the lunch. Is there a follow-up question?
No, this is, this is why I want to have lunch. You've thrown zingers and spread misinformation.
But Anne, this is a question for her to have two minutes as a response and then you can have a rebuttal.
Would you like to have lunch on June 27th, if so, when and where? And I will treat.
Absolutely. I will have to try, I will have to figure out when I can get my lunch break from the gig I have that day. And I would love to have lunch and talk about all of these issues and better ways for the Town of Telluride and the county to work together. I feel like there's a disconnect. I've, I know you're referring to the email I sent out to many members of the community about testimony that you gave at the state on behalf of the county, mentioning the Town of Telluride multiple times without talking to us about it. And that was a really big deal, not just to me, but everybody on town council. And I called everyone on town council to both ask how they felt about this letter I was writing, make sure that they didn't feel like it was mudslinging or incorrect, make sure that it didn't feel like it was too accusatory and that it was based in fact. And all of them gave me a, a thumbs up, as well as editorial changes that they recommended for a way to make it more specific and to the point and really try and avoid an adversarial and/or mean tone to it. It was a really big deal and really upsetting to our town council that you went and gave testimony without consulting us about it. I don't think it's fair to say that what I was sending around was misinformation because I was simply quoting you and then quoting myself and then giving justification for why I thought that there was a problem here. And I also, you, you know, I read a rebuttal that you wrote to that email that said that I didn't come to you first, when in fact, I came to your county meeting to give my comments and to express myself and represent the whole town council about our feelings about your actions. And I don't think that that's inappropriate. We're in a campaign and a race and pointing out why we think we might be the better candidate is part of campaigning for office.
I think we have different approaches and feelings about that. I think this country is in a very tender time with a lot of division and unpleasant discourse. And I had hoped for better for this campaign, Geneva. And the issue that I'm speaking to is not just the short-term rental, which actually has turned out to be a great learning experience for me. So thank you for bringing that up. But it's also the information on the street about my stance on Diamond Ridge. It's the information on the street about how I've been invited to a meeting that I didn't attend, which I have no memory of. I don't know where that went. And I'm surprised there wasn't a follow-up.
Okay, thank you both for your thoughtful and candid answers to our questions and each other's questions. Now it's time for closing remarks. So each candidate will have two minutes to make the closing remarks and we'll start with Geneva first.
Okay, great. Thanks for, everybody for attending this. This is democracy in action and I think that bold discussions are a really big part of democracy. So thank you. For my closing statements, I'd like to discuss communication and public engagement. I believe in transparency and improving the communication channels between the government and the public. I pushed to expand Telluride's Communications Department, which now engages with a robust press release and social media program. And I independently initiated a regular radio segment on CODO where I explain what's coming up on council for discussion, a segment I plan to continue for county meetings. I also, if I'm elected, plan to be in regular contact with all elected officials and larger nonprofit organizations that are involved in some of the programs that are doing the service to our community members and providing services that they need. As your county commissioner, I'm committed to being accessible to you, the constituents, whether through phone calls, in-person meetings, or even Instagram messages. I want to hear your perspectives. Your input is invaluable and I'm here to represent the diverse voices that make up our county. Finally, I believe that collaboration is key. I prioritize collaboration across local municipalities and will aim for transparent communication and accessibility at the county level. This includes robust communication between municipalities to leave, to achieve large ambitious goals. We have a lot of infrastructure improvements that we need to work on as a region. And I think it's really important that we have folks in these negotiating places that have a long, strong track record of understanding the issues and working within the government boundaries. To wrap it up, I'll state that I'm ready to bring my experience, determination, and commitment to the role of county commissioner. I, I want to fight for you, the people, and I hope you will give me your support. Thanks.
So this is the part where I ask for your vote. There are only three county commissioners who work together to govern and provide services for a diverse population across a huge expanse of land. So who we elect during this primary to serve as District One County Commissioner really matters. Perhaps not as much as who we elect in November as president, but it still matters. There are substantial issues facing San Miguel County today, including, yes, workforce housing, but also increasing access to behavioral health services, implementing our Regional Climate Action Plan, constructing a new hospital, operating and likely rebuilding the gondola beginning in 2028, building on our still early efforts to create a diverse and inclusive and equitable community, expanding and updating water treat, wastewater treatment plants, recruiting and retaining more childcare providers and teachers, understanding the carrying capacity of our region and how we are going to manage that. To get all of this done, there's no time to waste on learning curves and conflict. San Miguel County needs a leader with deep and broad countywide experience and relationships, an open-minded, collaborative approach to decision-making, a big brain and a big heart. I am that leader. And I also ask for you to, so I've asked for you to vote for me and for all today, tomorrow, or anytime between now and June 25th. Thank you.
Thank you both.
And so we thank you all, everyone, for attending our forum this evening. And we at the PWC are grateful for your engagement in local politics and your commitment to your community. And we especially thank you, Anne and Geneva, for your thoughtful remarks. Running for office is a challenging endeavor and we want to express our appreciation for both of these candidates who currently serve in public office and are seeking to continue their service. Public service is becoming increasingly demanding and your dedication is commemorable, commendable, sorry. If you would like, I know, I'm reading myself. If you would like to learn more about PWC or possibly join our mailing list, there is a sign-up sheet in the back of the room. This is a very important election year. And the PWC will be providing voter education events in the late summer and fall as we prepare for general elections as well. So we maintain an election-specific page with lots of resources on our website. So please check us out at sanjuanprogressive.org. And ballots have been mailed to all San Miguel County residents. And if you have not received your ballot, please reach out to the County Clerk's Department. And don't forget to vote by 7:00 PM on Tuesday, June 25th. Thank you both very much.